And call the Frank County Commission meeting to order, please.
Mr. Summier?
Present.
Mr. Wayman?
Present.
Chair Harris?
Present.
I chair better?
Present.
Commissioner DeGussel?
Present.
And for pledge allegiance. Stay standing.
Let us pray. Gracious Father God, we're thankful to be here today, Lord God. You're so good to us, Lord. I just pray you minister to us and through us and just have your way in Jesus's name. Amen. Let me take my reading out of Psalm 119, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. Teach me, oh Lord, the way of thy statutes, and I shall keep it until the end. Thirty-four, give me understanding and shall keep thy law, and I shall keep thy law, yea, and shall observe it with my whole heart. Thirty-five, make me to be in the path of thy commandments, for therein do I delight. Heavenly Father God, help us to draw an eye on to you, Lord, and draw an eye on to us, Lord. And we just pray for everyone here today. Just bless each family, bless each one, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Course, Sarah Stoffer?
Good morning, Commission. I'm in charge of a clicker, so no guarantees here. Am I doing the zip trip first? Is that my question?
We've got the Corvette.
Okay, that's what I thought, too. All right, so our Corvette car show you guys sponsored, and I want to come back and give a feedback on that. We held it on April twenty-sixth this year. This is the third year that Main Street has taken it on, and it's been, this is the sixteenth year it's been done. In the last three years, we've done it on Main Street and taken over the, I don't want to say the whole thing because it still is helping, but really the registration, all of that nine yards. We have grown. The first year, we had eleven cars. This last year, last year we had thirty-one, and this year we had over fifty-seven. So we're growing each year. We're growing in our communication of networking, of who to contact. Surprisingly, there's a lot of Corvettes. As we know, Ottawa is, in Franklin County, a gearhead area, as I call it. But we actually didn't have very many participants even from Ottawa. We did have some, but not all of them because of previous obligations, sports, and things like that were going on with grandkids. So there's a large part of their club that wasn't even represented this year. Overall, running our placer report, we had two thousand six hundred people downtown. If we broke that down into like the area or timeframe of our event from ten to three, we had over eight hundred in participation. We use the sponsorship for marketing to grow the audience of where we're advertising to get the name out there. And then we also used it for a face painter because we're also finding that anything that we can offer as a community that everybody can be a part of or bring their kids to, it's an expensive time right now. So if a family can participate in something and not have to shell out a ton to participate for more equity to come. I believe that the funding allowed us to, sorry, I lost my place there. Get the eyes out there to see. And now that we've gained some networking and knowing other locations, we know where to hit. We did have a couple come from Arkansas even, and we're not quite sure where they seen that one, but they came in and he was ready to set his car up and start detailing it at seven AM whenever I was out there. I was like, I don't even have the clothes, the streets closed yet. Many of the businesses seen an impact on the spending downtown because there's so much foot traffic. The participants, a lot of times, it's kind of funny to see them walking around with their coffee at first and detailing, and then pizzas being delivered and different things like that. That's really all I have on the Corvette car show. So it doesn't start till ten, so ten to three.
It's done before three.
Yeah, like we did awards at two-thirty. So they're rolling out at three.
I was coming in from Lawrence and.
When they were rolling out, yeah.
Yeah, I was like, oh, wow, that's a cool car. Oh, that's a cool car.
Yeah, so we have a couple of clubs that, a good portion of their whole clubs come. Topeka's a good representation, and they come. We had people traveling from over a hundred and fifty miles out, though, that were participating.
It seems like the end of April is a very busy time. Is that, is that when it's generally been?
It's, that's what they've held it in the past, and so we decided to keep it that weekend. We have had discussion of maybe changing it because there is a large show at Lake of the Ostrics that some were torn on. I guess part of their group went there, and then they'd like to see more of their club participate. So, but then it's, okay, when do we plug it in and not affect another event going on? So. Any other questions? I was gonna say I attached on the back. Is that okay? All right. Zip trip next.
Yes.
Oh, I haven't even touched it yet. Okay, are any of you guys familiar with zip trip? Yeah, so I learned about this. As you guys know, I've been serving on the Northeast Kansas Tourism Board. When I'm there, they'll talk about different things like that could be an opportunity for us to participate in. For example, this is something, hey, if you qualify, meet the requirements, I'd recommend you nominating your community. So I nominated this back in January, and it was crickets. And I thought, well, I nominate this. We'll see if anything happens. And then, oh, it would have been week before last, I was in my office in a meeting, and a gentleman from Fox Four shows up to announce that we have been selected as a zip trip. So a zip trip is the morning show for Fox Four. They come to your community that they select and do their morning show in the downtown. And they then advertise the community. The goal of it is to be a destination trip. So we had to be within forty-five minutes of Kansas City area. And the goal is to come, stay for a day trip, explore what the community has to offer, and go back home for the summer. The cool thing that about us, we don't get to pick when ours is, so they picked that for us. But as you can see, we're only one of two Kansas communities that have been selected. So just being selected in itself is a huge opportunity for Ottawa and Franklin County. You know how I hit play?
Prompt to play a video.
I have some examples from previous. Sorry, see, I told you. Walk and chew gum. While he's working on that, I'll just talk. I reached out to the other communities that have done this in the past and asked them what their feedback was. Were they glad they did it? The exposure was great and that they were happier they were did. So these are some that were mentioned. It was something to be proud of as a community. They had great community support, and the community really rallied behind them. One was being able to use the footage afterwards, so that's something, as we go into more detail, I'll talk about. And then helping them grow into their identity of what they wanted to become or known as. So I think that's huge for us. We're sitting in a perfect opportunity to grow, and this could be a way to grow with it. They would come in on the Friday morning and likely set up starting at five AM. airing would start between six and ten AM. So all morning long, they'd be highlighting Ottawa. I'm just gonna see if I can move forward, and we might come, I'm gonna come back to the, oh, hey, there's the, there's no sound. So as you can see on here, you're gonna see different businesses that are highlighted, and this is the part that I'm coming to you guys for. And I'll go to the breakdown a little bit. Each commercial is what these are. We'll have three businesses in them. And then at the end, you'll see, along with the three businesses, it has logos on it. So for example, here it has the three businesses. I'm gonna go back. And then the title sponsor, so like county and city, Main Street, would all be listed on every commercial, okay? Being as how they don't have sound, I'm just gonna let them kind of play through, so you guys can see them. They do have sound with them typically. And as you can see, they have different varieties of businesses. The businesses all have to have buy-in as well, and I'll go through that in just a second. So all of this footage is then able to be cut from the organizations and businesses. Here's some of those, the one that mentioned that it helped them with their identity of knowing what they wanted their community to be known as. So these would all air during the weather section of leading up to those previous weeks. So starting on five-thirty, all the way through August is when ours would be airing on the weather.
Will the other towns be airing as well?
So they have different opportunities of where they can air. So they can air as well as they, we move forward with this. We've kind of secured the weather section as it was the most viewed, so that's what I went after, and the price was the same as the others. And I felt like when I'm watching the news, I'm waiting for the weather, and I thought that was the same for others, so I thought that was a good spot to plug us if we could. Now I'm gonna go into our options. So we have, our first option here would be six events. Those dates, the different communities that they're being aired, they'd be going through those. So if you look, we would have six commercials at thirty seconds, and each commercial would have three businesses in it. So essentially, we'd have eighteen businesses be able to advertise, okay? With a total of thirty-six commercials. The total investment on this one is just under twenty-four thousand dollars, and I'm gonna break that down a little bit more for you here to show the partnership of how we're hoping for this to work. So breaking it down, city and county, and then Main Street and Chamber. And then with eighteen businesses, each business would pay twen- two hundred and six dollars. Now, if something doesn't come through, that extra would then be relied on to the businesses.
Do you have businesses already willing?
Yes, we already have some businesses that I'm, have started to reach out to, and we, I'm almost nervous that we're gonna have over eighteen, but it's gonna be first, you know. We're gonna include, my plan is to have some industrial, but then also some mostly businesses, retail, things like that. But then industrial as well, because if we can get them here to visit, they might realize, oh, this is a great place to live. You know, maybe we can move them, get them to decide to move here by a little clip, or that there's job workforce opportunities here in town. So this is option one. Do you want us to keep going, or do you want me to wait for questions? I just didn't want to rush through. Okay, so this is the same thing, only it's option two. As you can tell, it is much less. However, it also is only three thirty-second ads, and it is only nine businesses. Okay, so that means that we have a total of eighteen that are running. The breakdown then looks a little bit different as city and county are both four. Main Street and Chamber would stay at the two, and the businesses, it's actually more to have less.
Six events, weather permitting, what?
That's the weather, like where we would, oh, so like if there's a tornado or something like that, then, like, or if it's.
What are the events? That's what I'm gonna get.
The event is them coming and filming here. So like each of those days is considered an event because they're airing, or they're airing at another community. And we're, our ads, commercials would be airing during their weather and stuff like that in their commercial time. Because they don't just announce. We as a community know that we have a zip trip, but how they do it is they build enticement. They don't reveal until the week before where the zip trip is, where they're gonna be on location. And then it kind of, it creates an excitement about it, and then people are like, oh, let's go find them.
So just so everybody realizes that, we don't have to do this to be a zip trip. They will still, it'll still be a zip trip. They will still come. You'll still do the news from here.
Correct. Even if we don't do the advertisement, this is just an added bonus perk to get more eyes on the businesses that are in the community.
And so like if we want to do like the courthouse or whatever, that, is that, I mean, some of the things at the beginning were not actually businesses. Would you consider that to be a business? In the courthouse?
I believe that's just included, like with you guys being a sponsor, like that would be included in the video type of thing.
So we're really paying for the ads?
Yeah, that, this is, that's exactly what we're paying for, is we're, this is only for the ads. Now, like I said before, all the footage that they create from this is ours to keep. We can edit it, break it down, use it for anything that we want to.
So it's really, we just need to decide if this is a one-time tourism.
This is a one-time, I have to know, my deadline is tomorrow, so that's why I'm coming before you. I have, and because they will be in town Monday recording.
Like next Monday?
Yeah.
Starting at the businesses that are doing it?
Because they start airing on the thirtieth.
We're gonna film the ad?
They film the commercials. Do what?
You need to know about whether or not we'd want to subsidize ads now, because they're gonna be here Monday. They're filming the ads over the weekend.
They're film, they're gonna start filming for the ads because they're gonna start airing on the thirtieth. So the sooner we can get these ads, commercials created, the more time they have to edit them and break them down. But then I also have to confirm and go through to the different businesses and collectors as well.
And we don't know if the city, what the city's decided, because they haven't made up their mind yet.
They were, I originally was only going before them today, as I was out of town last week, and then I threw it at them last minute, last Wednesday, and I asked them not to take action until I was able to present myself. So they're playing, I go to them at ten today.
Basically, would we question? Use fed tax dollars, tourism dollars to subsidize the ads?
Correct.
Do the ads all, I mean, you talked about industrial businesses. Those dollars have to be used for, what would be the, what would be the tourism aspect of that?
Not all of them. I just, I want to have a well-rounded approach of, and representing the community. And so we do have industry here and workforce availability, so I'd like to highlight on that some. I don't want to do all of it as industry, but I do want to highlight it some.
I think you'll have restaurants.
Yeah, restaurants, retail, brewery, you know.
The museum.
The museum, the auditorium, the courthouse. We have a lot of potential here. As you, but if we go, it all depends on how many businesses I can pick by which option is picked. And then the amount of commercials is cut in half as well. So the businesses are cut in half as well as the commercials.
Be like you do the park and the splash pad and the, the frisbee golf and the.
This has just been an opportunity that, as Main Street, and it aligns with our vision of attracting people downtown and to our community. And a lot of times, Main Street thinks, you know, we're pushing, like the Corvette show, to push it out there to other communities to bring people in. And that was one of the requirements of applying is, is your community considered a day trip destination?
So on that morning that they would come in for the actual zip trip, and they do the news that's gonna happen no matter what, how do they talk about Ottawa during that?
We have different guests. I'll probably be asking at least one of you to be making an appearance. And then, and then we, you know, discuss different areas of highlight that we want to highlight as a community and what we want to highlight, and then they kind of go with it. Now, they did tell me, you know, be prepared, you're gonna have people that are showing up and want to be seen with the news crew, or want to be seen with, you know, the county chairs and the mayor, different things like that, because they figured out this is the destination location. So they, they create the buzz about the zip trip. So then more people are watching it. I have, I didn't include it in the slide.
They have numbers on how many viewers?
Yeah, it's like three hundred thousand just for the news.
So the intros, where they're showing the communities, the murals, the, I don't know, all the things we saw in the downtown, the courthouse square, that's not during the ads, like, that's during like the intro to the segment, right? That's not what we're paying for. You're talking about wanting to show off the this, the core, the amenities in the community.
Part of it. So like, what, the commercials, like this that you're seeing here.
But that's part of filming here, right? Explaining where they're at. And that's gonna happen no matter what.
No, because they'll be set up on location. They'll be talking about the different things, but they won't be going to those locations. They'll be set up on one location downtown.
It would, it would have to be a part of the.
It'd have to be a part of the ad, because whenever they're filming or live, they're, for example, set up in front of the courthouse, and production is filming. But they're not moving around town. They're just talking about the difference.
If you want to show those things as part of the ad, then
That's where this comes in.
With the money to show the splash pad and disc golf course? They would have to buy an ad, the city would, or somebody would?
Right, so like the city being a partnership, that would cover in their commercials.
Okay.
It's really just, is this a good use of our TGT money? Do you think it would be an opportunity that would be interesting?
For, for what it's worth, I, transient guest tax dollars simply have to be used on things that can conceivably fill hotel rooms. So legally, I don't have a concern here. I, I would to, to perhaps echo Ian. I think the question is, do you see a return on investment for your four thousand or eight thousand dollar expenditure? To me, that is, are you going to get eight thousand dollars of value back out of this?
That's, I agree. I don't, I mean, it's, you're building a brand, you're building awareness. I get that, but if it wasn't TV, if there wasn't the novelty of being on TV, that's, I guess, exciting to, you know, take that away, would we do it?
It's a totally different audience. I mean, we are fortunate that we have radio here and people do social media, but this is a totally different target audience that we're hitting of people watching TV. And those people that it's hitting are the ones that have disposable income and are looking for those day trips to come to.
I could see an opportunity for some of the others that we do invest in tourism.
And those are some that we can reach out to.
Car show, tractor show, the bike ride.
Those can count.
Advertise them and promote them.
That would be considered into the businesses that would have buy-in.
That's what.
Yeah.
Those were, that would make, yeah, especially if it was ahead of the car show or ahead of some of the events to, that would make.
I mean, and it is ahead of the car show because it's into July, so it's putting it into their minds.
If it was, yeah. That would make a lot.
I'm kind of indifferent.
So like.
It's a one-time investment. I don't see the, you know.
I won't be coming back next year for it. We have, we would not, you cannot be selected again for at least five years. And I, from my, what I've looked into, I've not found a community that's been selected more than one time. I did find communities that, for example, Leavenworth, they had twenty-eight businesses buy-in on their last one. I do not know what their total was, to ask. They were not even a zip trip, and they seen enough return on their investment that they asked to use that as their funds multiple years.
So Sarah, could the board make stipulations that if the county is going to contribute to this, we want the car show included? We want, you know, whatever bike ride event, the courthouse, like is that, are you in the tractor show?
I'm, yes. Now, there is, now, I think we have to get kind of, those are then taken out business spots, so I think those would then have to have some business buy-in. Does that make sense? So like the car club would need to pay the two hundred and six dollars. The bike shop would need to pay the two hundred.
Pick people who are actually members of Ottawa Main Street.
This is, I mean, I'm not gonna lie, I am highlighting my members as on the, as if they're retail downtown. You know, those are gonna be people that are hit first, but that doesn't mean that I'm keeping it strictly to. Mainly, I mean.
That they have an opportunity?
Yeah.
You can't say that they have to be.
Well, I guess my question is, and I'm, I'm, I'm kind of trying to, but I, I'm basing this off of a response from Cole, but if we believe that it would be beneficial for the car show and the tractor show, why couldn't the county with our eight thousand dollar investment cover the two hundred and six dollar part of there? Like if we want our.
Part of our county.
So that could be, so that would be a portion that you want filmed. I will tell you.
That's what the board.
Yeah, yeah, and that would be the case, like that could be a highlighted factor in from your, like, along with the courthouse, different things like that.
But if, I'm assuming they're gonna come film because it's happening, and the car show, they would have to use stuff that's already filmed, wouldn't they?
We would probably, I'm sure we have enough footage or pictures to be able to pull that off, because we have drone footage and stuff that we can pull from. I will comment that I've already talked to some over-the-road gang, and they're in favor of being, you know, showcased in it.
I think getting that in the tractor deal would be really important. Trails, I mean, that would make a lot more sense to promote events in summer that are about to happen. Generally, retail activities are kind of an ancillary benefit of people coming here. You generally don't drive forty-five minutes to.
I don't know, people, I mean, they travel just for retail. I mean, look at our antique shops. They travel to do tours of antique shops.
Look at our car show.
I'm not, I mean, I understand, they're two different things. I completely understand, but people also come just for different retails.
So the, and then like the trails, would that be something that would be under our entity, or is that?
You could ask the bike shop if they wanna.
I just didn't know how that was gonna work.
I, I believe I already have a commitment from our bike shop.
Okay. So I just, I just didn't know what constituted.
I've planted a lot of seeds, but there's a lot in a short amount of time that I've had to pull together here. For example, I found out on a Thursday evening, and I left the following Wednesday at two AM for vacation.
What happens if we say yes and the city says no?
Then it's dead in water unless you guys want to move forward with more. Because there's no way that I can take it out of my budget as well as the Chamber.
I, I think it's an opportunity that's good to at least explore, so I would, I would be in favor.
At four or eight thousand, which level?
I think, I think you're really limiting yourself if you don't do it, and we definitely have the money in there.
I will be honest, I worry about if we do the four, and who are we highlighting and who are we leaving out? You know, and it gives us more opportunities, and that's what this is, is honestly an opportunity that we are able to partake in because we've gotten the zip trip. You know, had we not got the zip trip, then I wouldn't have even been before you guys asking for this, you know.
Do we put little stipulations? I mean, I wonder what everybody else thinks.
Yeah, I think that would be my request of all of you, that you just, if you want to participate, fantastic, but make sure she understands exactly what it is that you would like to see included. I mean, she needs to have some discretion.
And that's my goal is to, and I met originally with Christina, and we kind of discussed like different areas that we'd want on there, you know, car show, tractor show. Courthouse came up, different things like that, like what do we want to showcase county-wise? And I think even the industrial part is, you know, county as well, so. And I think even the industrial part is, you know, county as well. So.
Car show and tractor, tractor show.
Car show, tractor show, no courthouse?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pretty much your list that you discussed with Christina sounds goo- good.
We had a great conversation and.
Take courthouse for granted a lot of times.
We do, I agree.
Agree, it's a great, back to the Corvette car show, they asked me not to move it. I started in front of the courthouse and then I fill other blocks and they asked me not to move that because they love the backdrop so much. And it's a hidden gem, I think, in our community that, like you said, is taken for granted, you know, overlooked often.
So, you intend to do the trails and the bike shop too?
Um, Jeff with Ottawa Bike and Tractor Service is on my board, so he's seen the very first presentation.
So, he'll probably cover.
Honestly don't know how we would, I guess we could list a few events or, and I don't know what opportunities are going to be there. If it's something you want to go, or something the board wants to go after, I think we made it clear what our expectation as far as promoting events and this being, but if it's a light, if it's a useful tool, it's probably most likely going to be to promote events and bring people to town, so.
I mean.
I think the expectation is clear to you and.
Yeah. I mean, if it wasn't for those events.
Things and then probably won't be as.
Those events are key to our downtown. I mean, many of our businesses rely on those events to survive through the year, you know. So, I'm for sure going to.
I'm sure you're going to be back asking for something else someday, so I think our expectations on this are clear. You know, so I, I don't know how you would put it into words, so.
So, to put a bow on it, it sounds like there is support at the eight thousand dollar level. However, you would like generally for Sarah, from the county's perspective, to focus more on events in addition to the historic courthouse. Give her the discretion, but certainly car show, tractor show, bike trails, and, and we're good to go.
And before I, like, dot i's and cross t's, I can reach out and correlate, like, hey, am I missing anything on this that we want to have represented? It will be a short turnaround, you know, as we're going to start filming next week, hopefully. But I do want to make sure that we have every aspect covered and highlight Ottawa as much as we can.
Be clear, the dollars are guest tax dollars, so they're hotel bed taxes, they can't be used for roads and a lot of uses.
I personally will not, well, it'll, yeah.
Not for your benefit.
This doesn't benefit me, Main Street budget at all.
Yeah. So, I, I would ask that you, if you were in support, that you make a motion to use transient guest tax funds to participate in the Fox Four new zip trip event at the eight thousand dollar level.
So, moved at what he said.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Second. Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Chair Harris?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. And I will report back and be in touch, I'm sure, as we will need some representation on the 25th of July.
If the city does it as well?
Yes, hopefully the city. I'll report back after my next meeting.
Yeah, we will. I appreciate it. All right.
She came in first, be reading it.
Oh, yeah.
Kristy, you want to come out?
For your patience, guys. Good morning.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to go ahead and read the proclamation first?
Sure.
Okay, well, we're going to start with the first one. It's proclamation twenty-five dash zero five. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment, accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Thank you. Just for some history on that, well, first, I want to thank everybody that's in attendance. You can see, uh, the crews actually showed up for this as well too. And, and without them and, and their efforts, then we wouldn't have a EMS agency in, in the county. But just a little bit of history about EMS Week, it started in nineteen seventy-four. President Ford authorized it. That was the very first EMS Week. I, it is something that is sponsored annually now by the American College of Emergency Physicians in partnership with the National Association of Emergency Medical Technician. And those two organizations combine and put on, uh, events for us all week.
Can we read the child one or no?
All right. Proclamation twenty-five dash zero six. Whereas thirty-five million children receive emergency medical care each year due to illness or injury. And whereas, the needs of children are different than the needs of adults in medical emergencies. And whereas, the goal of emergency medical services for children is to help states and communities prepare for the, an emergency involving a child by helping emergency medical services, EMS agencies, and emergency, emergency departments become pediatric-ready. And there, whereas, the Emergency Medical Services for Children program supports research and improvement science to drive transformation of emergency care systems, including the pre-hospital setting. And whereas, Emergency Medical Services for Children relies on its established partnerships with the EMS community as well as multidisciplinary teams of providers across the emergency care continuum to help states and communities reduce child and youth disability and death due to severe illness or injury. And whereas, Emergency Medical Services for Children, the hundreds of thousands of pre-hospital and hospital-based clinicians it serves, the professional organizations and federal agencies in which it partners, and the patients and families it engages, are committed to collaborating to ensure high-quality emergency care for children. And whereas, it is proper and timely to bring recognition to the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services for children and the dedicated personnel who tirelessly, who work tirelessly to improve the delivery of pediatric care across emergency care systems. Now, therefore, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the date of May twenty-first, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services for Children's Day.
So, with this one, Emergency Medical Services for Children's Day was established in two thousand and one. However, we complete what's called a pediatric readiness assessment every two years. The last one that we did was the first time we were higher than the national average. So, really wanted to celebrate that and brought in a small sample of the, of the public that we serve. This is our least likely to, to see demographic, but absolutely the most challenging. And if they're, you know, up and talking and, and running around, that's exactly what we always want to see. Wanted to bring in and just say thank you and thank you to all of our providers.
Our grandson was transported to Children's Mercy before the age of one.
Yeah.
From Franklin County.
Yes.
And it is, I mean, it's for a parent.
It's terrifying.
It is very terrifying, so, very cool. He's getting, going into eighth grade now, so.
Good deal.
Yes.
Uh, we do have in our organization what's called a pediatric champion. Uh, that's our assistant chief, Louise Bardwell. She couldn't be here today because she had to go to, out of state to spend some time with her grandkids.
Say, can we get pictures?
Did you want a picture?
Yes, yes. Love a picture.
Want a picture with everybody, plus the kids and then add the kids?
Sure.
I think Joanna is here too to.
Right.
Yeah, bring her up.
We are photographer.
They gone.
No.
They gone.
Yeah.
I'm not standing by.
You want to hand those to Kristy so she has, Rod, do you want to hand those to Kristy so she has them up front?
There's a, there's a place right here. Right here.
Jason was trying to get covered up.
Camper Carter, come here.
Sophie, come in.
Come here.
Come here.
People's like, nope, not being a part of this.
I did come here, yes. Camper is not there.
Like, I'm going to sit back there and play.
Harder smile.
That's why I said when you're little, when you run everywhere, you don't have to worry about. My computer went to sleep.
Hey, Kristy. Bu- before you guys get out of here, um, I do want to tell you how much I appreciate all of you, how much the county appreciates you. It occurred to me, just contemplating this, I can recall every time that an ambulance has been called for like a family member or a friend. And I suspect most people can remember those days because they can be traumatizing. That's every day for you guys. So, um, I, I, I know you're built different, but I also know that has to take a toll on you. So, thank you all very much for what you do. Um, I'm very grateful that we have you, so, thanks.
The Munchkins, that might be the ambulance here soon.
Have we voted for the proclamations? Have we voted?
No, you haven't voted on them.
My computer went to sleep.
Can I do a motion for both?
Yeah, sure.
Motion to approve the two proclamations that were read.
Second. Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Public comment.
The only public comment was the one that I handed out to you before from Mr. Boogie.
Okay, and I think everybody's read through it. So, consider agenda. Consider the approval of claim vouchers, tax change orders of one million fifty-eight thousand four hundred and nine and thirty-eight cents. Consider the approval of the meeting minutes of May fourteenth and consider or approve the solicitation of bids for a culvert pipe.
Can you approve?
Second.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Sotomayor? Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
I just business approve the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority budget of two thousand and twenty-six. Janet.
This was presented to us from the Lake Region Solid Waste Coordinator Shay. Um, she sent this to me to get in front of you guys. Um, if you recall, we, we approved this very late last year. Um, they, for a couple of reasons, um, they were waiting on, on Shawnee to make the move into the district. And Don obviously can speak more about this if you need more information. But, um, they were waiting on, um, to form, to formally adopt Shawnee into the program. Um, and so, they would be contributing. So, and then, just a timeline of them getting in front of their board to get the budget approved. You guys didn't approve this budget last year until like September or October. Um, but this is something that they generally do earlier in the year. Um, there is really no change from last year that you can, you can see there in the budget that you have. Um, this is just something that has to be in front of each of the member counties to approve their budget. Um, our allocation for this budget is always placed in the solid waste budget. And you can see there's no change from last year.
Do you want to hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve, whatever this was called.
My computer went to sleep, so.
The Lake Region Solid Waste Authority budget for twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Staff reports.
Thanks, Rod. I don't have anything today.
Nothing? Sheriff? Jeff? Janet?
I'll just remind you guys that, um, June ninth and tenth are our budget study sessions. So, um, the, we'll expect Monday to take a good portion of the day and Tuesday hopefully will be done by noon.
Janet, I think that Brenda tentatively has a Board of Health meeting penciled in. Those don't normally take long. Are you all fine just double-dipping that day? If it, if it works out logistically with our budget schedule, just, you're going to be here anyway.
Yeah.
Starting out at eight-thirty and maybe I'll work with Brenda if it's.
Okay, the only one that I, that I've done anything on yet is the courts, just because I've got to get on Judge Wine's schedule. And so, I made that one Monday at nine a.m. So, it was the first one on the, on the schedule so that we didn't interfere.
Keep, keep that. I'll, I'll work through it with Brenda. More just making sure you guys are okay, that there may be. If we need to change Board of Health, we can do that.
I also think all our department heads are very flexible and, and we've called them before and asked them to speed up coming down or slow, slow up. So, I mean, I think all of them are flexible. I think we can.
Figure they hindered the second day or something.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Commissioners? Don?
No.
I don't have anything. Chamber coffee ethics, Glissi Salon on Friday, but the only thing I did.
I don't have anything either. Do you hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Say a aye.